Going out here and looking at the money that is in these TIF districts. I believe that, I don't know if anybody else had a chance to look at this latest November 9th Redevelopment Commission minutes, that the North End TIF's got almost $4 million in it, 3.955, and the South Side TIF has 5,000,99,000 in it. So with my, my perspective on this is that the money that where this work's going to be done should come out of the TIF money because that's why we have these TIF districts. And the money that is in the MVH fund, in which I'm not against paving anything, but the money that's in the MVH fund should be put together with the program for the neighborhoods. And that money, which is from gas tax, not saying, not saying that that paving won't get done in the TIF areas because it could, is that there should be something done in the neighborhoods. I don't think, I personally think that that money could be better utilized helping some of our worst streets in our neighborhoods, and that we should have had a meeting with the city planner and the mayor to get input from the council mayors, I mean from the council members, excuse me. So with that, I believe that we could get more paving done by starting this and getting this together and putting it forward for the state in the call coming up, plus other monies coming in the spring that we could, they could put together a program with input from the council members to do neighborhood paving, and then do another program, do another call, because I'll have another call in the fall, and we should have another 330,000 or 350 at that time to go forward with another call in the neighborhoods. So don't, don't miss, uh, don't misread what I said about any paving. I'm talking about how they're putting the program together and they're, and is what I see with all the roads that are in need of repair in the different wards. They're turning their backs on the neighborhoods. And that 400, because at the end of the year, I talked to Yvonne today, we have like 388,000 in the MVH fund. Now that money would go a long way for neighborhood paving, and even if you didn't participate in the Community Crossing Grant. So with my prior experience being involved in the city council, I have never seen not getting input from the council members. That when Bob Beeler was the mayor, when Sheila Bergerson was the mayor, when Mr. Oberle was the mayor, I always got input from the council. So if anybody, I'll open it up to the floor with, with that being, with talking about these finances, you have to think about that MVH fund and these, that money should stay in the neighborhoods.
Chairman Paul.
Plenty of money.
Chairman Chris Valensky.
Yes, Angie.
So, um, because I'm taking notes too, I'm taking the minutes for our committee and
Okay, okay.
Yep, so let me make sure that, so the committee is myself, Councilman Chris Valensky, Chris Valensky is the chair, and Dally Ziegus is the other member. And it looks like we have Councilman Don, Chris Valensky, Patrick, Simmons, Tillman, Mapp are all on, and appears that we have
Michael.
Mr. Wright and
Michael.
Michael.
Participating right by phone.
And then we have Mr. Wright, and I thought I saw, yep, Skylar was on too as well. I have a couple of questions, um, thank you for, you know, kind of introducing it. Uh, my first question, because I know that last year when we first joined council that there were a few roads, they cut back on it and the timing and everything. Um, Mr. Wright, as far as Community Crossings Grant, is that, is it, is part of the criteria that they have to fall within a certain criteria with the, with the rating for it to be included in, for that match?
Yes, all the roads, well, with trying to give the abridged version
Yep, sorry, so
is that you have to have a pavement management program. And so the adopted pavement management program is the Pacer.
Okay.
And the Pacer right now has all of the city streets scored, so that is, that is our program. So the streets have to be part of that program, so that, that's really the criteria.
But do they have to fall within a certain rating for them to be included to, for the match?
No. I don't believe that's true. I think you can submit for just about anything. You can submit for crack filling material, you know, that kind of stuff. And I, I don't know that, I don't know that we ever would. There's too much, uh, too many lane miles of higher priority stuff than crack filling. We have central services to buy crack fill material, go on crack fill, seal, whatever they need to do. But the, the match dollars should be applied for reconstruction, resurface.
Okay, and it doesn't
Surface in some kind.
So it doesn't matter if it's like below a five or anything like that?
Correct, but the goal and the target is to take care of the ones, twos, and threes. Those are the most expensive maintenance treatments that, that we have.
Okay.
And then everything outside of that, you know, each score, scores are one to 10, all right? And then every score, there's an associated or a suggested, not that you have to comply with it, but there's a suggested maintenance treatment. And each one of those maintenance treatments have a cost associated with the ones, twos, and threes, the most expensive, four, five, and six, you know, step down from that, seven, eight, nines down from that, 10 down from that.
And, and the list that you get, that we have for this one, so were these, were there any streets worse than these that were, that weren't selected, or were these all part of the worst of the worst?
So when, uh, when the, last year in January, when we started, there was an understanding that there were sure, certain, I don't have all the facts, but there were certain shortcomings in the, uh, accounts that we were like behind. And then once, once they started to peel back the layers of that onion, they found out that the funding was even worse citywide than what was being presented prior to the new administration taking over. Once they discovered that there were certain shortfalls, or that the finances were in a little bit worse shape than what they had anticipated, Mayor Perry could have, well, for lack of a better term, put the brakes on creating and spending money on new projects. Made sense, let's find out where we are financially before we go running up a bill that we can't pay. So that was really kind of the philosophy, and so, uh, we didn't do, you know, any projects last year. We did ask to, you know, for input on projects, but that was even before, that was even before COVID hit, okay? So, you know, to email one out, and I got, I got one email response back from Councilman Don, and then Councilman Paul, you know, I don't remember the exact dates, it's a year ago, but Don replied in an email, Paul called by phone, hey, let's go look at York Street. So we went and looked at York Street, and you know, the decision was you either need to pave that, fix it, or close it, those were your choices, fix it or close it. And so Mayor said, all right, let's take some money, we have to, we gotta fix, buy a school, I mean, you can't have an unsafe road by a school, all of those things come into play. So Mayor said, yeah, go ahead, take some money, submit it, get the match, and so, so we only did York Street last year in terms of projects, but central services still went on, filling, sealing.
So can you fast forward to
Well, what I, before you, before we move on, we need to understand the history, that the moratorium on not doing projects carried through the summer. We were not to do and, uh, take care, not, or don't, don't take on any new projects, and so we didn't. Then Redevelopment Commission said, hey, we have some money, let's do some paving. So it was well within the mayor's, um, directions to the engineering department, to me, we weren't spending money out of the MVH. Redevelopment Commission had money. So Skylar and I went to Redevelopment Commission, they says we have X number of dollars. We queried the Pacer mapping to give us all the roads inside of the TIFs that scored a 1, 2, or 3, because our target isn't 1, 2, or 3.
Right.
Those are the goals, the next three or four years, we're doing 1, 2s, and 3s. So those are the goals. They had money, we queried it, Tony Basil made us a map, uh, we sent those maps, or we took the maps out, because you have to check that Pacer map. You know, they, they scored them, and every once in a while, you know, it's, it's done by humans, humans making error, you have to make sure that you're not going out, you're gonna pave a road that's 10, 10 is the best, but. So we went out, Skylar and I, and we put up a list, we pulled the list directly out of the Pacer, there was no, you know, there was no political background, nobody come and said, I want this road, I want this road, none of that matters. The only thing that matters is a score on the, you know, on a thing. And so we went and looked at them, made sure they, the score on the Pacer map was consistent with the, you know, the 1, 2, or a 3, and if it was a 1, 2, or 3, we ran the dollars up, the number of segments up until what Redevelopment Commission said they had available to spend. And so that, that's where we ran, one, it's not like we're not doing roads in the neighborhoods.
Right.
There's only one or two of those segments on that list that aren't in a neighborhood.
So that's a question, so my question is, so I wanted to get to that. So thank you for that history. So when I calculate how much of the matches from, um, the Redevelopment Commission versus what's coming out of the MVH, it's about 77%, something like that. So, so I know we ran, you ran the dollars, dollars up until you could get to that point, but I know we got, we have a couple of streets that are outside of, um, the TIF. And what we say, so when I look at it, I'm thinking it, I'm just thinking in simple terms, it's just engineer, 77% of it is being paid out of Redevelopment Commission, so is it approximately 77% of the roads in that we're doing, um, are part of this project? I'm just looking at it in simple terms like that.
I can't answer that question, I don't, I don't know what the percent.
Right, right.
In fact, if you really, it's a great question, I, I understand the question, I don't have that answer, I don't know what the percentage.
So that was my, my main question, but I think one of the things that I did want to share, when I looked at these streets, I mean, they are in neighborhoods, um, even though they're within the TIF district, they are in some neighborhoods, but, um, maybe, you know, and I, I don't want to beat a dead horse about, um, we didn't get an opportunity, you know, to provide, um, some commentary around it, but it would be nice in the future to get a list of those 1, 2s, and 3s, and I think, um, you know, so that the ward council folks for sure can, you know, take a look at them, you know, um, to see, but I know, that was my, my main thing is, so about 77% of this match is being covered by the Redevelopment Commission, um, which I think, based on the other two, I think it's two streets that are not a part of.
There's, uh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, there's two streets in the East TIF, and then there's one that, uh, the Barker section from Popular to
Woodland out.
Woodland. That are, that are not, well, the two, two of them are in the east, but I, I'm not the money guy. Apparently they don't have money to do, they don't have any money in that TIF. And Barker Street completes a project that was started a couple of years ago before I got here. It terminated at Popular, for whatever reason, they stopped at Popular. It's attractive, it's an attractive section to do, one, it completes the program, completes that project, and there's some missing sidewalks in there to kind of complete the gaps in the, it's an attractive project, and it meets a 1, 2, or 3 on the list. So there was a lot of attractive, you know, some attractive points on there to go ahead and get it submitted, get it done. So we did.
And the East TIF, so it doesn't, it doesn't have any, any funding in it, and it doesn't really have any money to pay back a loan if we loaned it from another TIF, because I think there's some parameters on the timeframe it is to pay it back. So, um, that was, those are the only questions I had.
I would make another comment though.
Hold on a moment, Dally would like to say something here.
Oh, I'm sorry. So the way I, I see it too, from Yvonne's paperwork today, we have about 1.13 million dollars in the motor vehicle fund.
Yes.
The 300 was left over from last year. So we actually have much more money available, and I think since this project has been already kind of vetted and looked at and objectively paced, you know, we're paying around 16% of a 1.55 million dollar project. It's really a good return on our money. And we need to do another project, as Paul says, like in the neighborhoods and whatever streets you think, we can do a second project with our regular motor vehicle tax money, because right now, this match, you're getting so much for so little input. I think it's really logical to do this because it's very cost effective. It's 16% of, we're paying 16% of a huge project, and then we use the remaining money, set up another project, start having discussions on what else we can pay. So that's kind of my two cents on it.
And that's due, and that's due
Hold on a minute, please.
Yep.
I want to correct that, what Dally was getting into, the motor vehicle highway fund. You gotta remember that, yeah, we, we get like 1.4 somewhere in that neighborhood, but it's divided, it has to be, that goes to the street department, the other is a restricted fund that has to be spent on paving. And at the end of this year, uh, I just had a conversation clarifying the amount that's left in that fund is 388,000, some odd change. So with that, with that being said, um, I just wanted to clarify that, Dally.
So when we get additional funding this year?
I'm sorry, Angie, do you want to?
I said, do we get additional
Excuse me, what was that? Well, we get, over the year, you get a monthly payment, and roughly around 120, 120,000 in that area. And so much goes to the restricted fund, half of it goes to the restricted fund, the other half goes into the fund to, uh, for the street department. So it, it's a monthly payment, so you have to gather that every month and accumulate your monies. So that, what my, um, I don't want to lewd or get in it too far. So with that being said, does that answer your question, Angie, or?
Yeah, I would just want to know if Yvonne could give, uh, if Controller Hoffmester can give us an estimate of what the MVH fund spend would kind of be estimated for 2021?
Yes, I can.
Okay, Yvonne.
Um, the worksheet that I had sent out, that's a form that the, um, state uses when we ask for an additional appropriation, but this gives all the information that you're asking for. So on, if you're looking at this form that I had sent out this morning, on line 6 is the January 1, 2021 cash balance. So on January 1, we had 388,090 dollars in the MVH restricted fund. If you look on line 5, that says miscellaneous revenue, that's what we expect to receive this year, 753,637 dollars. This is the estimate from the, um, state of Indiana, what they are going to give the city for the MVH, and this is the 50% that would go to the MVH restricted. So if you add those two numbers together, because we have no encumbrances, we have nothing budgeted in this fund at this time, we can additionally appropriate up to 1,141,727 dollars. So as Dally said, we have roughly 1.1 million dollars available that we can budget to do street projects this year.
Okay.
Does, does that answer your question, Angie?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
With that being said, on the monies, is that my ask, my perspective is this. So you really get a, a grasp of this, these TIF districts were formed for a specific reason, for infrastructure improvements, and that is way, that's, the money should be taken from the TIF districts to do these projects. And that, and that money should stay in the MVH so we can get some neighborhood, more projects going, because that 250,000 is going in areas, they're going in areas that are in the, uh, TIF, and the way I read this one, one page in the, in the report that I got, I received it today, is that ineligible funds is 143,000 on different road projects that are out there. I guess it's a carry on, um, it says grant eligible, and then it says grant, and then it says city share, and then it says ineligible from the grant, so.
Councilman Chris Valensky, I can answer that for you. Those are the engineering costs for these projects. So if you, if you look at this spreadsheet, as I believe, um, Councilwoman Deitch was saying, over two thirds of this whole project is being paid for with TIF dollars. 621,739 dollars and 23 cents is coming from the TIF dollars.
I understand that, but the whole premise is that the TIF districts were formed to pay for these things.
And they are.
And they're not totally
There's only three projects in here that, that we're asking for other funds to pay for. 11 of them are being paid for by, by the TIF. You know, the majority by the North Side TIF and one project with the South Side TIF.
Correct.
And that, that was my question for the, so the ones that are in the east, the ones that are part of that TIF, there's no money in that TIF to accommodate completed project, so that
That is correct.
Correct, Angie, I'm here, uh, this is Skylar talking, yes, you are correct, and here's the, the, the dilemma, is that we can loan to a TIF, but you can't loan to a TIF that is not producing because it can't pay back its debt in the amount of time that is allotted by state law.
And what is the amount of time allotted?
You're allotted a year.
Oh, okay.
You're allotted a year, you can extend it, I think, six months, but without knowing, we've never gotten a pay in there, so we don't know what it generates. So say it generates only 10,000 dollars and we loan it 150, well, we're not going to be able to pay it back in the year and six months that's allotted for that. So that's, that's the, that's the dilemma of, of when you loan to other TIFs, you have to make sure that it can pay back its debt within that amount of time.
Okay, so, so can we, because I, you know, and I don't know this, so for the, the Community Crossings Grant, is there a, is there a maximum amount that we can apply for each year?
A million, a million, correct Jeff?
A million?
A million dollars, a million each time, a million each time, oh no, a million total, million total each year.
A million total.
It's a million total each year, it's a million total each year.
Okay, so.
And as the funds grow in the MVH, over the course of the year, we were anticipating submitting up to something on the order of 400,000 for the spring call for projects, because we don't want to commit the fund that we don't have. We don't have what the state's going to give us.
Right, that was going to be
We don't have it in September, October, and November yet, and then the next call is in the fall, when that exactly is, it kind of fluctuates, is it, you know, late October or late November, this one was late November, the last call was late November, but we don't want to overcommit the fund, and so we split it in two calls, 400,000 dollars each.
Okay, so.
We could apply up to 500,000 if there's a little bit more, you know, maybe there was some carryover from last year in the fund, we could submit, you know, up to the amount that we have in the fund, I don't see any harm in submitting, you know, for everything we can.
Right.
It's just that, you know, the thought process was, we didn't, I'm not the money guy, you know, that's kind of, you know, I rely on Yvonne, she tells me how much money we got to spend, so I rely on Yvonne, you know, and, and so our, the last time we talked, we says, well, you know, just hypothetically, theoretically, we should be able to apply up to four, maybe we can apply four up to five, you know, I don't, you know, I don't know, but, you know, the bottom line and the concept was, don't apply, don't over, don't overcommit the account. I mean, that was kind of the philosophy.
Because we're using 250 now, we'll accumulate up to about 400 grand and go through the next set, and then the rest of the year we accumulate again for us to do this again in January. My question is this, how many, I mean, are there more streets, uh, within the TIF district that are 1, 2, or 3?
Correct, there are.
There are, but not, but Jeff, not as many as that I would say that are out in our neighborhoods outside the TIF, I mean, I think that would be a fair assumption.
So they're scattered, they're randomly, they're
So, uh, they're scattered, they're randomly, they're equally randomly distributed throughout the town, it doesn't, you know. The TIF doesn't, it's quality and the status of the roads doesn't have anything to do with some arbitrary boundary line on the, on a map, you know what I mean? So they're randomly throughout the.
Okay, uh, that, that's all the questions I have.
If I may. Oh, excuse me, go ahead, Donnie.
No, go ahead, you, you're the chair.
Uh, I just wanna say this about this Pacer program. Number one. It's already three years old. Number two. The information that we have should be audited, so we know where it's at. Number three, we should have had this meeting back in September with the council, not now when we wanna allocate money. That's, that's what I'm, that's my perspective on this, because I know for a fact that there are roads. In the city of Michigan City, proper, and in the TIF districts that are horrendous. And one that I'll say is. It isn't even in the area that I represent. Washington Park Boulevard. Or I think that there's a Lakeshore Drive, I'm sorry, that goes past the zoo. That road is chewed up. Also. With that, I, I will um. Relinquish the uh, Donnie, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President, for relinquishing your time. Just a cou- just a couple uh, just a couple comments uh, about what we're talking about here this evening. Uh, first of all, I'd like to start off with. Talking about the money, cause that's what this meeting's all about, and then I'll get into some of the uh, roadways that I looked at. Uh, but what we're asking for here is an additional two hundred and fifty thousand. From redevelopment commission, from monies that's coming from the TIF districts. That is taxpayers' money, that should be used to improve, to improve. Those areas, and that's why we have the TIF districts. So number one, I'm all in favor of getting that additional money and then taking that uh, additional two hundred and fifty thousand. And, you know, use it in a, in a neighborhood somewhere, two hundred and fifty thousand. Doesn't go a long way when it comes to black topping, or when it comes to sidewalks. And we can all just look at the estimates that Yvonne gave us today, in, in our report, that shows you how much. Uh, these projects are cost, they're ve- they're very costly, but. It can help, it can help on projects, you know, even if it means getting in an additional three or four sidewalks. To make somebody happy in their, in their neighborhood, and make it safe. It's all about safety here. Uh, going to the Pacer report. And, and I agree a hundred and twenty percent with uh, with my brother, not because he's the chairman of this, but just because. I've been on the council since they did the initial Pacer report, and it's three years old. Now, what happens in three winters, in three years of roadways in Michigan City, we all know what happens. So whatever was a five, three years ago, I'm sure it's a two by now. And all you have to do is drive around your wards, and you can see every street almost is, it has the alligator cracks in it. Uh, take, for example, take a ride down Michigan Boulevard. I mean, that is gonna be an issue here in a few years, and where are we gonna get the money to start black topping Michigan Boulevard? I'm not, I'm not done yet, Mr. President, I got a few more, I got a few more comments. Uh, so we did, I did take a ride with uh, Paul on Sunday morning, and we looked at all these streets. Uh, and the condition that they were in. Uh, one of the streets. That I'm in disagreement with black topping, and it's in the south end tip. Is where you turn off by Buffalo Wild Wings, and then you head due east. And I think there's like fourteen hundred feet, that's scheduled to be black topped there, and I think that's in a neighborhood of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To uh, to be repaired. I don't think it's that bad, and the, and the reason I say that is, if you go in front of Lols. Okay, yeah, the lumberyard, Lols. Right, and, and there's this stretch here that goes about, I don't know, a hundred and fifty feet. And it's nothing but potholes, it's been filled in a hundred times by the city. And that is not on this list to be repaired, and that's in the south end tip.
Councilor Prisbalinski?
Yes.
Mayor, hold on a minute, let Don finish.
No, the mayor can go, the mayor can go ahead and talk.
Thank you, Paul Prisbalinski. Uh, the reason that's not being addressed, because we do not own that service drive. We need to take possession of that, if you look on Beacon. Our parade stops where it turns to the south. Meyer, Menards, and Lowes, each own a section of that service drive all the way down to the end.
Oh, okay.
Eventually, we need to take possession of that.
And I know we discussed that last year, Mayor.
Excuse me.
We needed to take possession of it because it was so bad, I think someone came and did a presentation. At one, uh, I don't know if it was a planning meeting or, or redevelopment commission meeting, but um, it was discussed that we didn't own it.
Okay. With the comments from the mayor about taking possession of that road, let me ask this. That road is very, it's some, it's very bad, but why? At this stage of the game, why haven't we done that already? Why haven't we extended that road, or have progress on that, there's plenty of money in that TIF. See, we should have been talking about that in September, Mr. Mayor, not now. Thank you.
Well, Paul, in September, we were in the throes of a budget review, let's not lose track of time. Last September, we were in the throes of, of the twenty twenty-one budget review. And long before that was when Mr. Wright sent out a, a copy of the. Pacer report to all the council members.
Excuse me.
Back only from your brother and you.
Excuse me. Let's try to keep order in the meeting, alright?
Okay, can I continue, Mr. President?
Yes.
Alright, thanks, thank you, Mayor, for that input, so then I retract everything I said about that street, okay, that's why it's not in the report. And that's fine, okay. Now, on the south end tip, we're all well aware of Cleveland Ave. Cleveland Ave from Paz Road going to four hundred north. And I don't know what the underlying condition is, and why this has gone on for so long. And why, I think the redevelopment commission initially had something to do with the. Financing or whatever, the construction of this road. But that road needs to be on this list. Getting corrected with those cracks that are in it. I wrote, I drove that the other day when I first saw that, cause there, it was actually a constituent that called me. And she saw the article in the paper, and she said, what about Cleveland Ave, I said, that's fantastic, cause I forgot all about, you know, you get used to driving your own. Roads and you forgot it, so. That needs to be taken care of, if you go from Paz Road to four hundred north. I mean, I counted, you know, seventy-five bo-booms, bumps. From one, from there to there, and I, it, it to not have that on this list, and getting addressed. You know, whatever, the engineering's wrong with it, the base of it is wrong, and I'm not talking about black topping that whole area. I'm talking about just correcting where those cracks are at, get those cracks removed, and black top. Where those cracks are at and go from there, but. I mean, there's people that don't even wanna travel that road anymore because of the condition of it's in. And I don't know what happened, I don't know what happened with. You know, I heard, I heard a one time there was a warranty on the road, and, and, and Reese Riley didn't stand up to their half of it. Or what have you, but you know, that might be something that the city attorney. Uh, could look into, I, I know Jeff, you know, he could probably sink his teeth into it.
Willing to drive it with you anytime you wanna go.
Nah, you don't have to drive it with me, Jeff, but, you know, just find out, you know, the history, what's going on with this thing, and why that's like that, and let's get it fixed.
So back to uh, Michigan Boulevard, real quick.
Before you go off of that, because I saw that committee member, Dahlia Ziegas.
Hold on a minute, Dahlia wants, yeah, Dahlia wants.
Sorry, I'm not watching for.
Alright, I, I know, I'm trying to keep track as I, as I'm watching, because I also received a phone call on uh. South, um, Cleveland Road to um, Councilman Prisbalinski about how bad it was as well, so. But Count, Councilwoman Ziegas had her hand up.
Alright, thank you, so here's how I see this, I see that we see a lot of streets that need repair. And I just wanna know, like, this project is already pretty much set, not that it's set in stone, but it's ready to go. And it's costing us only a quarter of the money that we have in the motor vehicle fund. So why don't we get the second project going immediately after this? The reason why I wanna get this done is because we have this tremendous match. And the rest of the projects, we're gonna have to pay for ourselves, but still. Try to get all the list of streets that need to be done and start working on a second project, cause this is only a quarter of our motor vehicle fund. And it's got a tremendous match, that's why we're paying two fifty and getting one point five million dollars worth of work done. Let's go on and make a second project right away, I mean, let's have another meeting and say, these are the streets you wanna address next, so I kinda.
No, it's, it's an ongoing, it's ongoing, we're, we're already there, doing what you're talking about. I have the lists, I have the list of all the ones, twos, and threes in the city, I've got, I can get them by TIFs. I've got them separated out by wards. It's my goal to chip away at them and get them done.
Is there a time constraint?
Hold on, hold on a moment, hold on a moment, yes, Don.
I just wanted to finish my comment.
Okay, let Don finish.
That's all, that's all I'm trying to do here, I'll be done shortly. Uh, so, in, in response to, well, not in response to, but. From doing that Myers Drive, well, my point is, forget about doing Myers Drive. Let's get over to uh, Cleveland Ave, and, and flip-flop these uh, jobs right now, and start looking at them. Then we could always come back to Myers Drive, I'm just looking at the one, two, three, four, five. One, two, three, four, five, I would think that Cleveland Ave is like a big one with a bullseye on it. And Myers Drive might be a four right now.
Can't do it.
Point on that.
We can't do it, Councilman, the, the reason is, is that money is assigned to that section. That we submitted in the grant, the money's.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's what I was asking, I'm sorry, that's what I was interrupting for, I wanted to find out what were the constraints. On the money and the timeframe that it has to be um, uh, completed.
It's something like four months, it's something like four months, get them in, get them done, get them bid, get them done, so that they can. So the state can keep cycling and keeping, you know, the wheel turning. Uh, there's no reason not that you, you know, there's no reason not to submit Cleveland Road in the next call. You know, here in April, there's no reason not to do that. We go look at it, we look at the Pacer score, if it's a one, two, or three, we get it on the list and get it done. You know, it's, it's, it's really that straightforward to me, it's either a one, two, or three, or it's a not.
Alright, understand, I didn't, I didn't, I did not know that everything that was on that sheet, Jeff, was submitted, and this had to go, and you couldn't.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, that each segment.
Alright.
Has.
I'm learning something.
High segments, and then the state assigns based on, and, and one, one, one comment would be, a couple of them would be. As far as the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost that you're putting up. You know, because we're handling all this in the house, we're, you know, the engineer, you're not paying for it. You're saving two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of engineering, take twenty percent of the one point four. That's what we're saving by doing it here in-house. Now, so, you're not paying anything for this project, okay, that's what that comes down to.
Final comment, final comment?
Let me say this, we are paying something for this. It's tax revenue from the TIF. And it's also the gasoline tax that a lot of people in Michigan City pay into. So we are paying something for it, but the bottom line is this.
The Michigan City portion wasn't.
Yeah, Mr. President?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Oh, okay, this is Michael Mack, uh, like I said, I'm in the car, and I just wanted to uh. Ask kind of one question, and then to make a statement, like you said, about uh, uh, my, my premise here, what I believe uh. That we may be missing, now, my, my question is, what percentage of all of these funds that we're talking about. Are gonna be done in-house versus put up for bid? And my assumption is that the vast majority of, of these projects we're talking about are gonna be put up, put out for a bid. And when I think about a lot of the things I'm hearing about how things used to be done and how they're done now, uh, just from the streets department's uh. Presentation they did a while back, they said that they, their staff is down, so my assumption is, back in the day, a lot of stuff was done in-house. Um, so, to me, uh, getting a, a heck of a deal on a grant. Is the far more important deal, uh, as opposed to if trying to fa- pay full price to bid any street out. I would rather be patient and allow the process to dictate those. Prices at a discount, um, cause I would really like to see us start to investigate this whole process. In a manner that increases the amount of in-house, because what he just said of uh, items done in-house as opposed to bidding. Um, the amount of training and the amount of people, when we're talking about these uh, bid processes. We go into all of these other things about who's working on the pro- projects and who's not. And I really would like to see us begin to incorporate uh, that kinda language into these discussions of. How much of it can be done in-house, and how many more people we can get in our community. To start learning some of these processes and, and how to do things, and even if we have to buy some equipment, so. I, I'm like for Dahlia what she said as far as. Just let's get this done because it's at a steep discount, and I, I would really find it hard pressed, if we're not gonna get a matching grant. To put an intentional bid out, uh, that's not in-house. To pay extra money to expedite a street that's not rated as high as some of the others, and we're gonna pay full price, uh. If I'm off-base in that logic, you know, please let me know, and uh, that's all I had.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mack. Um, Don, do you have anything else?
Some more thing, uh, you know, the two hundred and fifty thousand that we're discussing here this evening. This, it's gonna be, we're not giving, and I know people are saying, you know, I've heard that, well, we don't wanna give up this grant. We're not giving up this grant, you see, the money's either gonna come from the city, or, you know. We'll get it from the re- you know, hopefully get it from the redevelopment commission. But by no means is this city council gonna give away seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant money. Uh, it's just that we have different sides, different opinions right now. And my opinion is, is that we should get the money from the redevelopment commission, it's only two hundred and fifty thousand uh, dollars. And they have a total of. I don't know, net worth right now, the TIF districts have nine million dollars. That's nine million dollars, so for another two hundred and fifty. I think uh, we could be good neighbors and, and they could do that, because it is taxpayers' money. It's not their money, it's not my money, it belongs to all of us, cause it's the tax dollars generated in that area. So that's my uh, stand on, I'd like to see the redevelopment commission kick in, take care of it. But come on, we all know that we're not giving this money up, it's either gonna come from the city. Or it's gonna, it's either gonna come from the M V H fund, or it's gonna come from the redevelopment commission.
That TIF doesn't have any money.
But he, but here's the deal, we can't take, the one TIF we're talking about, the east TIF, doesn't have any money, we can't loan to it. But we also cannot spend the money, Don, outside of the TIF.
Excuse me. Skylar, Don, were you finished?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, alright, go ahead, Skylar.
But we cannot spend the, the north side TIF or the south side TIF outside of the redevelopment areas. We can't contribute, so the extra two fifty has to come from you, or we can't pave the roads.
Exactly, so that's what I was trying to say is that the.
Hold up a minute, I gotta ask, is that specifically said in the contract with the state that the city, city has to pay the money out of the MVH?
Oh, I don't know that.
Specifically say that?
Not on the MVH, it just can't come out of the north side TIF or the south side TIF.
Uh, right, it's gotta stay within those tiffs. See, okay, I'm, alright, I just wanted to clarify that. Go ahead Skylar, right?
Oh, that he, she answered the, Ms., Ms. Deutch, Councilman?
Yeah, so that was the only thing. So the east side TIF, we were just, because that was the question, um, I think another council person then, because I'm, and, because I asked the same thing, can we loan the money to that TIF? But we can't loan the money from one TIF to another if it's not generating money, because they have to pay it back based on state law within eighteen months.
Correct.
And it doesn't have the money in there to do it. So if we want to do that project, it has to come from the city. It can't come out of a TIF that doesn't have any money.
Right.
Okay, okay. I, I got, I got a question for Skylar.
I've gotta run, so make it quick. I've got another meeting.
With all the money, do we have to use MVH money for that, uh, community crossing grant?
Hmm. That's y'all, that's, that's up to.
So we could use redevelopment money.
We already are, we're using sixty.
I know we are. I, Skylar, I know we are.
I just answered the question though Paul. I just said we can't use money outside of the TIF, the north and the south to pave the roads that are not in the north and the south TIF, that's what.
I understand that totally. That, that wasn't my que- real question. My question was the roads that are, you're talking about doing in the north and south TIF can be paid from, completely by the north and south TIF. It doesn't have to come from the MVH fund.
Theoretically, yes.
To get the grant.
Yeah, if they're inside the TIF, yeah.
Alright, so my point is this. See, if that money was captured, is, is a grant stipulated that you can only apply for one grant in a cycle?
No, there's two. As a general premise, there's two calls for projects, one in the spring and one in the fall. And I think we're, I think we're kind of missing the history. We're missing the history a little bit, that.
No.
There was no MVH money available.
Excuse me.
There was no MVH. In the fall, the minimum application for the CCM.
Jeff.
He can't hear us. He's delayed.
Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Give me a minute, alright?
Okay.
Give me a minute before you, you know, look, I'm running this meeting and I'm trying to keep it in order. So, I'll call on you if you raise your hand or whatever, but we, we got people just interjecting. I, I appreciate. We gotta, you know, try to give everybody a chance to speak here. Okay Jeff, yeah, you wanna elaborate on the history?
No, I was just, I kind of understand that you want to get all the money out of the TIF that you can. I, you know, I think that makes sense to get as much as you can. And I think it makes sense, moving forward, that the redevelopment kind of pays their own way as they're kind of going along and using the MVH funds to, to get the match money for. But as far, what I, the point I was trying to make with history was that there wasn't MVH funds, at least within my grasp, to be able to use to make the application. So it was either get the money from the redevelopment or don't get the money.
I understand that. I think we, I think we all understand that.
Everybody kind of understands that.
But, you know, some of us, uh, have a different, uh, mindset about approaching and using the MVH, uh, at least me, and I'm sorry if, I don't want to take up all the time, but I just think it would be more beneficial that we could have captured even more money. That's what I'm getting at. More money and done things in the neighborhoods that aren't in the TIF district that need attention. And, and that's my whole premise here. Not that I'm against doing any projects and getting matching funds from the state. By no means, I, I, I think we should try to capture all the money we can. Yeah, Jeff.
Uh, I just want to go, uh, back about ten minutes. Uh, Don and you were talking about the Pacer scores being old. They very well may be, but the point I want to make is that doesn't change the list of the ones, twos, and threes that I have right now.
Mm-hmm.
Everything, you are a hundred percent right. Everything's gonna be getting worse. Okay, they're not gonna fix themselves, but that doesn't change the ones, twos, and threes now that have been ones, twos, and threes for a longer period of time that we go out and, and, and update the Pacer score. So that's, that's the only, that's the only thing, I just wanted to address that, that the Pacer scores were old. Doesn't change that we got ones, twos, and threes on that list. And in fact, even if you update the list, those are just gonna be ones, twos, and threes that are the oldest on the list, so.
Right. Okay. Alright, thanks Jeff. Yes, Dalia?
Uh, so, a- again, I would like to recommend that we spend that two hundred and fifty, again, it's about a quarter of our budget, and right away, maybe meet next month if you're, if you would see that, uh, you know, possible, and start accumulating our second list of streets so that we'll be ready. When this grant comes or the opportunity comes, we'll be ready. And even if the opportunity doesn't come, we do have our motor vehicle that's money to do some of the projects on our own. So I would think, let's go forward, let's not talk about what was in the past, but could have been. But I'd like to get something done for the city and, you know, everyone uses those roads. I think this is a great project. I'm all for it.
Okay, that, Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Yeah, I just have one, uh, comment since, uh, our discussion at the council meeting. The reason why I posed the question about what was in the MVH fund, because we didn't have that information prior to, uh, today essentially. So, you know, had we had that information prior to, uh, and appropriation and introduced us, then, you know, some of these questions could have been hashed out ahead of time and we wouldn't be, you know, questioning what the money is for, where the money is going for, we, we may have been able to have a better understanding prior to that. So if, if, I'm glad we're having this discussion and that information has came out. So we do know where we stand as far as the impact and, uh, the Pacer ratings and the, the schedule of, so, I definitely agree with Councilwoman Ziegas that we should, you know, plan now for the next round of grants or whatever roads we want to get prioritized so that you know, get the more, more traveled, uh, bad roads in, in their rotation versus whatever metric they used to choose them, uh, last time. So, uh, that was, I think the, the main thing is information is everything. As long as we have information ahead of time, we'll be better with the, to make these decisions instead of just on the fly at the council meeting. Thanks.
Hey, thank you. Uh, uh, I recognize Mr. Simmons and I, I got, I, I see you, I got you Tracy, after, after Jean. Go ahead, Jean.
You're muted, you're muted. Jean?
She didn't have anything.
Okay.
I did not have anything.
Okay, I'm sorry. I saw your hand go up there. I, oh, go ahead Tracy.
Thank you. Um, I would just like to ask, uh, of Mr. Wright, if you could please provide me with, um, the fifth ward, um, Pacer of the bad roads, one, two, three, fours, and, uh, within the TIF as well and probably for all the wards, if they're also requesting that to see, to compare what you have on the list and from what we may go out in the, in the neighborhoods and see for ourselves.
Yes ma'am, I'll take care of that. I was clicking to the file, I was gonna send it to you right now. Um, I guess I'll fall on the sword of the information sword. Again, you know, maybe that's my, maybe that's my bet. I don't, you know, I'm a get it done kind of guy, and so I've got a list of roads. It's my intention to get them done. Uh, sharing the information, that's probably my bet. I, I didn't, honestly, I didn't know you even wanted it. Okay, I, I just didn't know you wanted it, or I would have sent it to you. What do I care if you have it? But, uh, I'll send you the files. You can have any info, you're welcome to any information I got. Uh, and I'll, I'm gonna click and get that to you here. Well, I'll click and get it out to you before I leave the office tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Paul, you good?
Yeah, hold on a moment.
Oh, Angie was, Angie was up.
Go, go ahead Angie.
Well, um, what I wanted to say, um, uh, first of all, it's the engineering and you, I know that, um, sometimes it happens to the best of us, uh, Mr. Wright. Um, I agree with everything being said. I know that, um, Dalia made a recommendation. I know that Don has another comment. Um, but, um, I just want to say, I, I, I do recommend and, and I, I don't want to make a motion yet, because I know Don has another, he wants to make another comment. But I do believe we need to move forward. We know that we can't make any changes. This is the project that has I've been, has already been identified, um, utilizing, um, like I said, seventy-seven percent of the redevelopment fund, um, for the totality of the project, which is about twenty-three percent of the match, um, from the MVH fund, which can come from any fund from the city that they determine, but the MVH fund is the most appropriate, but, um, that portion is sixteen percent of the total one point whatever per millions, uh, of dollars that we're looking at to bring into the city to get this done. So, I support it. I just hope that, you know, I, you know, thank you Paul, because Paul, Paul, first of all, he made sure we understood the Pacer rating. He made sure we understood, gave us a big old packet of information. I know more now than I did when I was on the council before. Um, so I appreciate, um, the effort and the diligence and, and helping us understand how this works and maybe this next go around, you know, as we move forward over the next couple of years, Mr. Wright, um, you know, we can get some of these streets done and, and have some input, you know, Pacer rating, that's good, but if we travel down and see that one is worse off because it deteriorated over the last year worse than the other, you know, at least we will have some say in it and I think that's a, I think this conversation has been very good. Um, so I'll hold off on a motion and, and I know you got a couple more discussion points.
Um, with that being said, I wanted to thank Mr. Wright for getting that information put together so I could distribute it to you, because he was as much a part of that, but he couldn't make that workshop we had. And I wanted to thank Jeff. I thanked him a couple of different times. Jeff, thanks for getting that together. And, and that is a, a good tool. People need to understand what they're looking at when they look at these streets. And, and with, uh, Angie, with you saying that, I would hope that you would refrain from making a motion at this time, at everybody, because here's, here's the way I'm looking at this. This should have been brought to the committee or we should have had a sit-down and had the information given to us and, uh, you know, got input from the rest of the council. Uh, this wasn't haphazardly put together. They had been working on it for a while. Now, the, the list was, the list was put out back in November, I think, the preliminary list. So, you know, a red flag went off to me that paving was going on. So, you, you know, we're supposed to be trying to be transparent in what we're doing with the, uh, public's business and public money. And, and we had no input into the process. That's the way I look at it. And why do we even have a committee? If the mayor isn't gonna ask us to meet and have Mr. Wright there and, and have Skylar there and then, or we have a workshop before we even, we even get to a paving list. That, that's my, that's my own personal opinion and observation on what, what was going on here. And, and I'm just putting my, uh, I'm trying to put my knowledge forward before I'm putting my opinion forward. Because, uh, I don't, you know, I was on the city council for quite a while before this round. And that, w- we used a lot of money to get stuff done through the riverboat. And I'm thinking that maybe we might have to visit somehow, setting aside money that we're taking in now, and, and so we all have input in creating a program for a simple thing like sidewalk repair. So that the city engineer, we have that money available so it can go into a project. And, and I mean, that's in the future, that I think we should get to in the future here. Um, and ha- have that money, um, designated in, in that fund. So, with, with that being said, I would hope that we can refrain from making a motion. I didn't call this meeting to make a motion. I called it as a workshop and, uh, to let the council, the, uh, make their own minds up without, because we haven't had any input up until now anyway, really. If you think about it Angie, we haven't had any input. They came up with the list. They had their, they had what they wanted to do and put forward by our city planner. And I'll reserve my comments for the, the council meeting on, on, uh, concerning that, because I don't want to try to.
Can I respond then? I'm okay with, um, a recommendation that the council make a decision on their own, but let me say this. I don't want to hold the mayor, uh, Mr. Wright, or, or Skylar hostage either to a process that, um, this is a new council, some of, you know, half the people, and I, I don't remember, um, I don't want to hold them hostage to a process that hasn't been consistent. Um, this is an opportunity for us to set that, that agenda moving forward. The money's there, the project's there, um, all of those things. And I'm okay with the council making their own decision and making that recommendation from the committee that we allow each council member to make their own decision based on what they heard here tonight. I'm definitely okay with even, that, that's my motion, is that we allow the council, because we, it is a committee meeting. We, it, it was sent out as a committee meeting, so I'm okay with the recommendation being that the committee recommends that the council, uh, makes their own decision and, and that we do not put forth the recommendation from the ca- from the committee. I'm okay with that.
Okay, I'll second that.
So, and, and that way, you know, and Dalia is.
Yes, I don't know if this is out of order, but I would like to request the chairman of this committee to schedule another meeting in about a month to start gathering those lists of streets from your constituents and from your own observations. So we are ready, when the next project comes up, we'll have our list of streets. So, you know, it will kind of save some steps and get this going forward, because it's this year, this spring, correct?
Yes, it is.
I don't know when the second, that, that all, I think that all depends on the city planner. I don't know when the next call is. And for all I know, they're already working on a list for that call. So, with that being said, I, I take that under consideration, but also the ma- I think the mayor has to get ahold of me and, and tell me, you know, when they are looking at a meeting so, you know, we can make Jeff available, uh, to have input at that meeting. I, I.
Where you're looking.
We'll do, we'll do something, Dalia, definitely, because paving streets is a big item. It is. Yes, Jeff?
I was just, uh.
Well, first of all, we gotta, first of all, we got a motion and a second, we need to take a vote. So Angie, you call, you, would you please call?
Yeah, Dalia? Yeah, Dalia?
I.
Paul?
Hi.
Yeah, Angie, alright, so. But I know there's some more comments. I think this is good conversation, so, um, but I, 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 I agree with you, Paul, but I, I do think that this is an opportunity when we, when we talk about it to set a, you know, an agenda on how this should happen moving forward. I just think that it's been, it's been sporadic, and we've had different engineers, we had different planners, we've had different mayors, and I think it's been handled differently all the time. But I, I feel like Mr. Wright is like willing to, you know, work with us, share the information, and, you know, set that time to do it. I mean, anytime we've asked for anything, he gives the information. So it's not like he's, he's just, like he said, he's a, he's an engineer. He's not, that part, he's doing his job, it's not like he's trying to hide anything. I just think it's, you know, if, if someone responds or answers back, he's, he's always available. So I think if we just set that precedent that, you know, by a certain time of, you know, every quarter, we're gonna send our list of streets that are in this NVH list and, and these are the ones that we're getting complaints about, I think that, um, because of like, you know, Ms., you know, Ms. Meyer called me, you know, she's, she probably called a couple of us, but she called, talked about Cleveland Avenue. She said, I don't even drive down that street. Does it so bad? So, I, I think this is just an opportunity for us to, to do better. I think you've identified um, a hole or a gap and, and we've done this before, and I think we can just make it better and, and move forward.
I, and I agree with you. Jeff is a very good person to work with. He's not trying to hide anything, and I, I definitely agree with you that Jeff is, um, from the different engineers that I've worked with, and I've had discussions with Jeff about, uh, different people, is that he's definitely is a good person, knows what he's looking at, knows what he's talking about. That's why he's an engineer. And I think that he's doing us a great service on, uh, running that office. And, uh, just so everyone knows is that I have been talking to Jeff and telling him some of the history of different people and what they've done. And I think that I'll have to, I don't know if I can put him up on that scale yet, uh, working with, uh, Boyd Phillips when he was the city engineer. Um, but, nah, he's working his way, he's working his way there. I, I'm still rubbing on him, telling him how, how Mr. F- Mr. Phillips would, uh, do things, so.
Higher, higher bar gives me something to shoot for.
Yes, you're exactly right. And I'm glad you take it like that, Jeff. Thank you.
I would.
Alright, Jeff.
When you guys are, uh, you know, just, just some background information, you're gonna want street segments done. And when you give me that list, you're probably talking about the next paving year. Okay, cause we started putting together our list for twenty-twenty-one.
There you go.
Back in March.
There you go.
I gotta get the, you know, the sanitary board, the sanitary guy's gotta get on board. And the water guy's gotta get on board. And that doesn't happen overnight, okay? I need these roads televised. I need to have the sewers looked at. That doesn't happen overnight. They just don't run out that afternoon and go look at the sewers. You know what I mean? They, they've got jobs to do. They're maintaining this, you know, they're doing their jobs. When they get some free time, they go out and televise, you know, sewers. Same thing with Randy, you know, Russell over at the water department. They get the list, they got the twenty-twenty list, knowing that those are twenty-twenty-one projects we're looking at. So they go through their history, through their records. Are they lead lined? Are they galvanized pipe? What corporation taps need to be done? What water lines did need to be? Just so you know, when you submit and tell me you want a road section done, more than happy to get it done. Just keep in mind, it could be nine months. You know, it could be nine months before it actually gets, you know,
Do you have?
funded and underway. That's all, that's all.
List of what you're looking at? Do you have a current list, Mr. Wright, of, of what you're looking now, looking at now for the next round that you've started?
Uh, yes, and I just sent that to Tracy. That's what she asked for. And the list that I sent her are the ones that have, that have been televised. They're the ones that have been, you know, the water department coordination is happened. We don't wanna pave a road and then have to come tear it up to put a water line in. You know, you know that, right? I mean, that just makes sense.
So Jeff, excuse me, Don, go ahead.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. Uh, I think Jeff is doing a fantastic job, best city engineer that I've ever worked with. And always has the answers and is always, uh, accommodating. We've been for a couple of rides already to look at things, and I really appreciate that. And a- as I said earlier, and I, I know Paul mentioned it, but, uh, that was a discussion came up Sunday that I, I believe like we have the rainy day fund, and that was put together so we don't have financial crisis in, in the, uh, wake of a pandemic and all that stuff. But I think the city, we, with the council really needs to take a look at putting together a fund that we fund either annually or monthly or every month from the riverboat, uh, that goes towards sidewalks and it goes towards blacktop. That way, every day, every year, you know, you know, if we set a goal of a million dollars or eight hundred thousand, we know that we're gonna have that money at the end of the year. And we're not sitting here haggling over, uh, where this money's coming from, where it's not coming from. I mean, I think some of the, one of those minute things that, that a person would expect from the city is that if you have a sidewalk presently and it's in bad shape, then you'd want it to have it, you know, fixed. And you, 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 you need to have a nice sidewalk system so people can get around, so mothers can push their children on strollers, uh, walking through the neighborhood, so kids can ride their bikes on the, uh, on the sidewalks. And so old timers can go out, senior citizens can go out for a walk and not have to worry about falling down on the sidewalks. And I know everybody understands that, but I just think moving forward for this year, and I'm gonna take a look at it, of what we have to do to put some kind of fund together for streets and sidewalks so we can move forward.
Yeah, and, and to add to that, I know there's a fund in the water, it, well, I'll talk to you about it later, but I think that's a great idea, um, to, to have some type of fund strictly for that, um, because even if we have to build up to it, and, you know, take a little time to get to there, at least we know we'll have it, and it has a minimum amount in there and, and we just keep adding to it every year until, you know, and then we always know that we can set aside those projects and plan for it.
Yeah, hey Angie, and then all the council members can fight over the money at the end of the year. Try to get the most rewards, right?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Don.
I'm done, I'm done.
So, it would be nice to have a, a list of priorities. I mean, everyone should reflect back and think, what are your priorities for the city? Cause sidewalks are always one of mine, and, uh, there's a couple of other things I like to work on. So everyone should probably kinda look at what are we trying to get done, because let's get some things done, right? Let's get a couple of things done.
We're gonna put a, I think we're gonna come together as a, a group. And I'm gonna share some history with you about like what Don was talking about. I already shared it with, uh, Jeff about this sidewalk and street repairing and all that, so. Uh, does anybody have anything else? Um, cause I think we, I think we've, uh, really got, Tracy, do you have any, anything else? Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment since you opened it up. Um, back to.
Okay, the chair recognizes the mayor.
Well, thank you. Uh, back to the comments that were made about previous work done on this list of streets. Uh, it, it's important to me that everyone know that I never hid any information or withheld any. York Street and this list of fourteen streets that are in the pot right now were done by the engineer, our engineer and our planning director, which has traditionally been what's been done in the past. I don't make up the list. That's their job. I didn't see the list until on, I didn't know about York until after it was decided to do it. I trust that responsibility to them. That's why they're here. The same with this current list of fourteen. I saw the list after they generated it. I trust their judgment. That's their job. That's what traditionally has been their role in community crossings. I don't make up the list. Uh, I share everybody's concern over Cleveland Ave. I've asked three different engineers what the problem is with Cleveland Ave, and I didn't get the same analysis from any one of them. It's a bad subsoil, it's a improper compaction. I don't know. We're gonna have a lot of work to do on Cleveland Ave. We're probably gonna have to cut every one of those bad seams out, cut it out deeply and redo the whole thing. But I agree, it definitely has to be done. It should be on a list a- as soon as possible, and I'm sure after the committee's comments tonight, both Mr. Wright and Mr. York will take that to heart and it'll be on the list very soon. I'm gonna approach Meyer Menards and Lo- and Loads to take possession of that service road because tha- that needs, that's all part of the South Tiff, uh, activity that needs to be done to put sidewalks in there. You can't put sidewalks along Franklin Street. There's not enough room. The sidewalk, a sidewalk, needs to be put along the service road. Another thing that I think we need to consider is the philosophy on sidewalks. Michigan City is always, well, I, I can't say that. I'm not a historian. Michigan City has many, many streets with sidewalks on each side of the street. The purpose of sidewalk is to keep people out of the street. We have more sidewalks than we can maintain. I believe in the future, we should focus on having one nice sidewalk on one side of the street. And on a street where we have two sidewalks, if one is dilapidated and deteriorated, we remove that sidewalk and plant grass. In a city, keep that easement for either widening the street, which as you know, Councilman Paul Prisbalinski, you have a lot of streets in the Second War that are very narrow that could be widened to accommodate the traffic today. We need to add together as a group, develop a philosophy for the future on sidewalks and, and roads. But there's been transparency here. I haven't hidden, hidden anything. These lists are the product of our city engineer and our city planner that I, I have a hundred percent confidence in.
Is that all, Mayor?
I'm sorry?
I said, is that all?
Yeah, thank, yes, I guess. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, with that being said, uh, I think the committee's gonna meet as a whole, and, uh, I'm gonna share a bunch of history with, with both members, and then we'll have an open workshop, we'll list it as a workshop to get into the history of streets, alleys and sidewalks in Michigan City. Cause, um, I think, I, this week I gave, uh, some information to Jeff Wright, our city engineer, about the history of, of, uh, streets in Michigan City. But I do believe that what Don said is that we have to truly think about coming up with a funding mechanism, and that we need to have, uh, you know, more input as a, uh, group in, in, into this inventory of the streets. And, uh, I don't think it, I don't think it takes a rocket scientist to figure out when you got a bad street. Um, with, with that, Jeff, I have a question for you. In, in your statement, were you saying that you're already working on a list for the second draw this year, or you already have it developed?
I have what I call, um,
A preliminary list?
So, the list that I have is section by section from, from this road to that road, but only between the two joining roads. That's the way the, the ci- that's the way the GIS and the mapping and the Pacer is set up, is individual sections. And so the list that I have is only enumerating those individual sections. Uh, at some point, once, once I get done with putting this package together that we're talking about now, when that's done off my desk, out the door, I'll take that list and then go look at those sections and, and string those together to make a paving section.
Well, what I'm, what I'm asking you is this. Are you and Skylar already coming up with a list for a second call? That's, that's what I wanna know, cause if you have.
The, the raw data, the raw data is there.
Okay, so then, in other words, we're getting noticed right now that the city engineer and the city planner is working on the second list, so if, if you want any input, you better do it now.
So, because we didn't. Raw data is there.
Okay, the raw data. I understand that. And, and we didn't, did anybody get notified that we're working on, uh, working on the list? Cause I know I didn't get notified that you were working on this list, so those are my complaints.
Back in March. I mean, this was back last March.
Okay.
Well, that's pretty sure. That's why I was asking that question. Um, Paul, he said that, um, part of the process was that they had to do, they have to, um, scope, they have to scope the sewer and the water lines. Um, so I think they've done that for some of these, but that doesn't mean that other streets couldn't make that list, but you s- wait, but you have to look at every segment and see if you can string them together. It's what you're telling us.
Exactly. And it's not like you couldn't pave just one short section.
Right.
You could. You pay a bigger dollar, you know what I mean? You'd pay a big dollar for doing a piece this big. Or if we string them in across and do, you know, do a piece that big.
So once you submit this, how long will it be before you start getting that, the, that list together to sh- that you're stringing along to share with us?
No, I don't know. I'm sorry. I don't, I don't know how long it's gonna take me to finish this. So you guys, earlier in the meeting, you're talking about these percentages. Well, you know, those are fluid numbers because I don't have the final, I don't have my final estimate. I put an estimate together to make the grants middle. And then I go back out and drive the roads and find out, well, exactly how much sidewalk do I need to replace?
We can send you our streets, and then you can look and see if they're a part of your list.
Okay, well, the bo- excuse me, the bottom line is that you're working on the second call, right?
Yes, as soon as I'm.
That is the point I'm making.
The raw data is there.
Okay, the raw data is that, so you're saying that you guys already made decisions on streets?
No.
No.
Okay. Alright, I'll have, I'll have a list for you in the morning, Jeff.
I got another meeting. I gotta go.
I've already been working on it.
Alright.
Okay, uh.
Whatever you submit. Whatever you guys submit, just make sure, you know, you're talking about a one, two or three.
Okay.
One, two or three.
Alright, Dalia. Dalia wants to say something here.
Oh, I was just saying bye to the mayor, cause he said he had. I was gonna move to adjourn if we can.
Okay, there's a, a motion to adjourn. I heard a, okay, a vote, is that?
No, we don't need a vote, but, um, I'll, I'll type everything up, Paul.
Alright, and I, I guess I, I appreciate that. I guess I owe you a gift certificate.
You know, I'll type it up.
I know, you'll figure out something for me, right?
Yep, I'll get it together.
Alright, alright.
Thanks.
Appreciate everybody's support. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jean. Adios.